On January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at three o'clock. Uh, we have Commissioner Nichols and Commissioner Minty in the room. We do have Commissioner Degroot joining us via Zoom. We have uh six items or seven items on our agenda, so um I will keep us moving along as a reminder for those that aren't with us every time. The first time you speak on record, please introduce yourself. We have about uh twenty minutes scheduled per item and our uh well, first, can I mark the meeting minutes from previous meetings as approved?
Yes.
Thanks. Uh, so our first item is Jacobs Engineering Groundwater Storage Update. We have some guests here with us and um I see, Erin, it's great to see you. Um.
Good to be here.
Hi.
Ma.
You're you're welcome to be up at the front.
Sure.
Sorry.
No, you're good. And so uh just first time you speak on the record, introduce yourself. We have about twenty minutes for the item. Do you want to lead us in this room?
Sure. Um Jeremy Morris, Highland County Public Works. Um way back a few years ago, we approached the board. Uh, there was some Marpa dollars available and we uh secured funds. The county is not in a utility business, but we thought agriculture is our number one economy. And uh we could see in the future, we all agree that I believe groundwater regulations are coming down the pipeline. So we secured some funding. Um initially, we hired Brown Caldwell. That's uh who Erin worked with. And then Erin transitioned to uh Jacobs Engineering and Brown Caldwell said um that there was a good stopping point on what they had completed and they were happy to transition it to uh Jacobs to continue. I think this has provided valuable information and the intent is um we are looking for ways to possibly recharge groundwater. So MAR is Managed Aquifer Recharge and um so we're at a pivotal point where the study is wrapping up. And uh we have an ask for the commissioners moving forward. I'll get into that a little bit after tailwind for uh funding requests and working with the Water Users Association and others, Bureau of Reclamation, scheduling some meetings going forward to start taking this from a study to uh action items and possibly a pilot project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Erin from Jacobs.
Yeah, hello, everybody. So I'm Erin Daycox. Um I know many people in the room. I was a a person who lived in Klamath Falls for over a decade. I am very passionate about being a part of a solution to a more resilient water fu- future to support agriculture and economic growth in Klamath County. Um Klamath County has my heart and I want it to be successful in every way. Uh, it was a really exciting um opportunity that we had to take this project a step further and start looking at actual locations where MAR Managed Aquifer Recharge could be a reality. At about this time, I met Dr. Maria Doherty, who's in the room with you, and I heard about her work in the Yakima Basin, where they have been trying to find um sustainable groundwater solutions for a few decades now, and she's been a really big part of that process. So uh when I heard about her work and that she did her PhD at Oregon State in Managed Aquifer Recharge, I was like, I need to bring her to Klamath County and get her engaged. And so she is the technical expert that's been doing a lion's share of the technical analysis. And we did some preliminary engineering just to look at what it would really take to take water from different existing water sources. Um before we even did the study of potential engineering, we looked at where there could be water available in the system through a water balance. And Maria also has done work like that in Yakima Basin. So again, my intention here is to bring experts that can help Klamath County move this forward and create a more positive future where we manage water resources uh from a sustainable way um to ensure the ag economy. And so without further ado, I would like to introduce my colleague Maria, who's in the room with you today.
Thank you. Um yep, Maria Doherty, um if we can start the slideshow, we've got a slideshow for you just to give you some background information on what's been done to date and the next phases um that we proceed.
Well, huge fire that up. Um Mike Zerenski, County Engineer, Deputy Public Works Director, uh and I, this is uh the the concept started with Mike and thinking that we have these vast reservoir systems and they're just evaporating water. And so Mike had a very uh outside of the box thinking of all this water is evaporating, what if we capture it and put it underground? And uh instead of it evaporating, uh the very first of the project started off with maybe a direct well injection. There are um regulations on that and treatment when you're taking surface water and putting it underground. There's aquifer um restrictions on that. So we kind of pivoted throughout the process when we were looking at, is the water there? And then how would we do a different using existing infrastructure as opposed to expensive treatment and expensive power to pump it underground? So that kind of got us to the most recent study and and uh updating. So just wanted to point out that Mike's online and he was a integral part of the last few years of this project.
Okay, um let me go ahead and get started. Uh so as Jeremy was explaining, uh this is just an overview of what Managed Aquifer Recharge looks like. On the left, we have infiltration basins, so more of a a gravity-fed type um improvement of groundwater conditions. And on the right, the ASR well, that's where you're injecting water in a confined aquifer. The EPA tends to regulate that um pretty significantly, um so the cost increases because there is uh um treatment that's required during injection and then after. And just to kind of give you an example, this was in the first report that we produced. On the very right side, uh where you see that aquifer, um it's an infiltration basin. You don't need to worry about anything as far as uh the labels, but uh the graph, the hydrograph shows uh what what we're kind of targeting and that um usually involves high flows and during certain periods. So on that hydrograph, you'll see a a blocked out um blue area volume um in different look, in different spots on the hydrograph during a period when we think water would be available or when demand's low or irrigation's not really needed. And that's basically your overall volume. And then if you look at the aquifer, it's only going to accept a certain volume um of recharge. So we would skim off what we could and then put it, say, for example, into an infiltration basin and let it just percolate and improve groundwater conditions. And so that's just kind of the overall summary. And when we did these two reports, one looks at the hydrograph and the water volume available and the other one looks at potential locations and aquifer conditions. And this is what the first report results look like. Uh again, on the left, that's just hydrograph showing an example of three months. We looked at nineteen seventy, I think it was nineteen seventy-four to two thousand and twenty-three. Where we had enough data, we pulled the volume of water that could potentially be available, looked at the timing of when that water would be available and then a uh potential skimming rate of that water, which was about ten percent. And what really stood out was the Lost River. If you look at the different graphs, you can see that as the years progressed to recent times, the Lost River still has significant water that is likely available. And I want to just caveat that with likely available. We, you know, we don't want to just definitely say there's water available, but we do see that there's signatures for potential capture of that water for Managed Aquifer Recharge. In the second half of that study, um produced a report that looked at different locations of potentially utilizing infiltration basins or some sort of passive methods, including um a galleries um where you have perforated pipe. You can actually uh dig out um the the ground surface, lay these perforated pipes down, return it back to its nat- almost natural conditions. And then as uh water is available, it can recharge the aquifer, but yet you can still use the the parcel as it was initially intended, say for farming or something like that. And these are the different locations that really stood out. Uh we have a couple in near the um near the, near Klamath Falls, some in Spring Lake, um and then we have Merrill, Mullin, and um the one in the upper right corner is Dry Lake. And just to give you an idea of what that looks like, what we did is we pulled all the available water well data that we could find and also the geology, the local geology. We came up with these idealized well logs that's on the left and that helps us understand how much, how much aquifer volume or how much offer space we have. And uh do we see any confining layers? Because if we're going to infiltrate, we want to make sure that we're not um hitting confining layers because that won't actually infiltrate to the targeted aquifer. On the right side, the upper right side, doing some equations with um some estimations pulled from these well logs, we were able to calculate what the potential storage could have been had an operation been um occurring since nineteen seventy-four to two thousand and twenty-three. And for Dry Lake, this is about a thousand eight acre feet. Uh these are very conservative values. It's likely much more than that. And then on the bottom right corner, uh we had a great team of engineers look at potential diversion. And so what does that look like if we were to pull that water off and um actually get it to the site itself? And so the next phase, that those, those two phases were really, there's two tasking reports are really great to get that accomplished. A lot of times when you're looking at Managed Aquifer Recharge, you don't have that opportunity. You're kind of just pulling well logs and trying to figure out you know, variables. Uh so it was a really comprehensive assessment, which I think is really great. The next step that is likely needed is some sort of partner collaboration, so bringing other stakeholders, partners into the conversation. One thing when it comes to Managed Aquifer Recharge that I've noticed over the years is if you do not bring in that collaborative effort, people tend to either take a position one way or the other. Um and it's, the position isn't necessarily based on the science. It could be based more on uh, you know, their political um views and things like that. So doing a um like workshops where you bring um a group of people in to discuss, this is just a general example of what the workshop could look like. Introductions to MAR, a lot of people have a hard time understanding groundwater, so they um, they need that kind of initial discussion to, you know, kind of go over the variables that um in a way that makes sense. And then I, workshop two could be something like um presentations. I uh, I have a colleague in the Yakima Basin that works for the Department of Ecology. He'd love to come out and give a presentation and discuss their successes. And then also maybe building capacity, uh improving collaboration, like how many, what other stakeholders might need to be brought into the room as well. Uh and then, for example, workshop four, where we could talk about an actual network, developing this network of groundwater storage and the next steps. Followed by a a potential pilot test where we would, uh since we do know these locations are somewhat suitable for Managed Aquifer Recharge, we could potentially install some monitoring wells. We could create a monitoring well network, uh which could include real-time telemetry. A lot of times you can uh make that accessible to the public, so they can actually see that groundwater filtration. It can turn into an educational component to some extent um as far as outreach goes. And then additional funding opportunities we've, we've targeted. Um the Rec- Bureau of Reclamation does have some small storage programs where they will fund uh, I think it's a, they're, they're funding limit is forty-three million. Um their ceiling floor is zero, so there's some flexibility there. There is a match, but we do need to um, we do need to show that we have uh at least two hundred acre feet of potential storage, which isn't a problem when it comes to groundwater, because the storage volume of groundwater is, tends to be very high. We just haven't done those specific calculations. And then the next step, in order to submit to this, uh submit this application, it requires a feasibility assessment. And that um, one thing I think is really neat about what's been done to date is most of these bullet points have been addressed. So there's some, there's some additional items that need to be kind of buttoned up, but we're um, we're almost there. And if we can submit the feasibility assessment, Reclamation will provide us with comments and feedback and allow us to resubmit it and then give us the permission to actually submit an application. And the application deadline is July fifteenth. And then we also, what, um Bureau of Reclamation also does the Water Smart. You probably know about this. Uh they do a a host of different types of um grant projects. The drought response program might be a good fit. Um it uh, it, I think it has a ten million dollar ceiling and a twenty-five thousand dollar floor, so they're, they fund quite a bit. And I put that image on the right to show you all the different um projects that have been funded to date. And uh one project that was funded was the groundwater storage banking project in California, so they do support that type of work as well. And I think, I think I got it under the.
Great. Uh, does the board have any questions of our guests?
I do.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Degroot, did you have any questions or comments?
I uh just gave you a quick comment. Thank you for all of your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Rest of the day.
Okay. I think what we would, um, what we'd like to ask, and it doesn't have to be decided here at this meeting, is uh in order to proceed with the next two steps, we need twenty thousand dollars of funding. Ten thousand would be on a partner reach-out meetings. Uh OWRD would certainly be engaged in that. And uh about ten thousand of that to finish up the feasibility uh studies, submit that, hopefully gain approval to submit the larger grants um later this summer and then apply for that uh grant to the Bureau of Reclamation. So ten thousand for that part of it. There's uh technical writing and assistance that needs to go into that grant application. There's uh figures and process and other things that we'll need Jacobs expertise in preparing.
Okay. So as we always do, um the board can take that request to a finance meeting or or an additional meeting. But before I wrap up this topic, is there any, again, any feedback from the board or any questions of our guests or?
Moss, did you have anything?
Yeah, I was.
It's on the next thing. Moss has been um very helpful for several years and going back further than that, probably all the knowledgeable people in the basin about history and groundwater and um so anyways, just.
Well, I would, I would like to offer a couple of points. You have Moss, Trisville, Klamath Water Use Association. One, this, this approach, one of of the ancillary benefits generally in these kind of settings primarily is is shallow domestic wells, municipal wells. So, you know, while there are ag benefits, you know, you can contemplate when we look at some of the challenges we've had to do the recent years with domestic wells. This is one of those solutions that that really can be brought to the table. Um in, with respect to some of the comments, we all think about, oh, we're always short of water. You know, just even since the last two weeks, um since Christmas, uh twenty-third of December, there's been approximately eleven thousand acre feet of water that's been uh sent over Kino, uh out of the Lost River system. That could have been, had this kind of system been in place, could have been captured and utilized. That's, that's, you know, equivalent to all the water in in Four Mile Lake, all water even dead stored. So massive amount of water that that frankly just went down and contributed to high flows on Klamath River. So these opportunities, they exist. They were, they exist in real time on an annual basis. And last point I just want to note is um, you know, we are very concerned about the potential for a critical groundwater designation to the water basin beginning soon in terms of the process this year. We see this process and even just a pilot project effort as a good um responsible way to frankly head off uh that uh knee-jerk response to some of the groundwater problems we have and say, hey, look, there's a better way to do it. There's a better way to manage groundwater. So um, those are the kind of three points I'd just leave you with with respect to the study. We're really grateful for, for all the technical folks that that um we've been able to get uh help on this project.
Great.
There's already a moratorium on um, as you know, and I'll probably give an update in a week, um Midland Community Well Effort. There's a moratorium on municipal water rights because we have, you know, groundwater uh declines. So OWRD, for exam- example, has already put a moratorium on that. So that's certainly impacts, there's fifty or sixty domestic exempt shallow wells there. And our, our, our thought would be to drill a new well for domestic purposes, but also fire protection, other things we can't because we have this groundwater moratorium on there. And so this aquifer recharge is a management tool to help start making back um progress towards lifting those and avoiding hopefully future regulation. And so if it can really hurt our number one economy, it can, it can also hurt um small unincorporated communities because they're unable to grow. And um so that's just a, a side challenge. We're just looking for um providing a few pilot projects and hopefully solid- solidifying some management tools in the short term, i.e. over the next several years in order to um gain back some of that lost ground that has, has occurred and will continually occur until we um get a program like this.
Okay. Thanks. If nothing else from the board, did you have a comment before we drop up?
Dave?
Did you have?
Anything you want to add?
Anything you wanted to add, Dave Pensley?
No, sorry, guys. I was just uh, I'm representing Klamath Water Users Association and sets Moss is there. I just defer to Moss and uh well, we are interested in trying to help out in any way we can moving into the future. This is a topic that is incredibly important to us. And um I've been talking with Rep Owens and or Rep Helm about your guys' study and they're very interested in finding out what's going on as well. So more conversations in Salem about it as well to maybe help out and maybe even get some additional funding. So um I'll continue to follow along and please re- reach out to me if you need help or Moss or Paul Simmons, but we're incredibly interested in this topic.
All right. Okay. With that, I'm going to wrap this agenda item. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your feedback. Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Yeah, good, great to see you, Erin.
So good to see you guys. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk today.
Yes, thank you.
Hope to see you soon.
Yeah, see you soon, Erin. Next item, grants.
See grant?
Yes, grants. Come on up. And we have it as Grant Advisory Committee Bylaws Language Suggestion. And we do have um, we have the item in front of us. And this is in relation to um a concept put for by our Grants Department that when they don't have a quorum of a Grants Committee, that perhaps staff could help them fill a quorum and and help them move business along by voting. I see you've drafted some language around that and it's just really up to the board. It looks like maybe Commissioner Degroot uh signed off. Um it's up to the board on whether we like that idea, pros, cons, and did you have anything on that?
So just to cut, yeah, real quick, the reasons for which this came up, I don't see going away, which are, apparently it's a small community, so a lot of times we tend to have folks on committees who also have a, an application for a grant or something, so have to recuse themselves. So even sometimes when there's a lot of people there, because of recusing, it doesn't make, a quorum will not exist. Other times, people just don't come to meetings. But um we have found probably in the last six months, two or three times, we've had to delay business because we couldn't take them. Yeah, so the idea was just if one of us was there or Vicki, someone from finance, we could cast a vote to keep business going and not delay things by a month, so we could meet again. Um so, so the proposal would be this would be just a standard component of all bylaw, the template that you guys use for committees. And it spells out when, so we wouldn't have a vote normally. It would only be a certain, about certain things. And who would be able to vote would also be the members. So could do it or not do it. It just seemed like something we could do to help move things along sometime.
I think it's, it's, yeah, it's a good idea. I'm just trying to think through, well, one, I just want to make sure consistency. So the beginning of this one, for example, Economic Development Advisory Committee says.
That's ingrained, this is true, it would be whichever committee.
Right, but it says seven, it's composed of seven, and then below, under membership, it says maybe composed of eight.
So we would be the eighth person.
Were you thinking the eight? So I might just word that differently of like, committee is still composed of seven, but the ability of someone from
I would trust that.
Staff to serve, um just because.
We could keep the, we could say the normal, like the, the designated committee is seven. And not even mess with that number, because we're technically not on a committee. We just be a moment of seed. To think if you're the one to have to type vote, is there a?
Yes.
It says not vote?
Nope.
It should be not, yeah.
Yeah.
So here, here's one that doesn't have to type, hold on.
And this would be, just for the record, this is for grants and funding-related committees, not all committees.
No, we were thinking specifically tourism, economic development, uh maybe uh Title III. We've had this happen on, um, any others?
Grasshopper?
Grasshopper, young grasshopper.
Maybe wolf deprecation.
Wolf, we're having a meeting Thursday. We haven't had it, yeah, once a year. It's hard to monitor. It happens once a year, but I guess, yeah, at any time when a quorum doesn't show up and they need to, uh, yeah, grasshopper was one.
Chair, I'm still here and I can support.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, questions? Same. And I am too. I actually just, I'm glad the council stepped in. My only, the only thing my brain is trying to figure out, but I, I think it's okay because the board ends up voting, is um, you know, I wouldn't want to put you all in like some kind of, I've conflict.
So we thought about like if we're a tie, like if we're suddenly a tiebreaker. Um but the more we thought through that, we don't have a dog in the fight, I mean, in meetings. We don't have a compelling reason to ever recuse ourselves. Um I could.
These aren't necessarily making.
Yeah, then we make the decision.
I could think through a scenario where we'd be uncomfortable. And if it were, we would just say we're uncomfortable. We don't want to vote. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, um, yeah, why don't you, uh, it sounds like you have support and consensus, consensus from the board to, you know, maybe clean it up a little and then it can just run through the two divisions maybe.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, a chart. And I have jury duty pay and a uh temporary hire with the two, two items listed.
So at the AAC meeting last week, they asked us to bring this to your attention um regarding jury duty, because this was, we came into question. So our current policy reads that the employee must sign over to the county all court payments received for jury service. Um, according to Oregon revised statutes, um that is the case. However, it does say that it does not affect any claim a juror may have for mileage reimbursement. So we had a situation came up, come up where somebody's like, well, if I get mileage from the court, do I need to also turn that over? And so there's, was kind of a discussion on whether or not that was the case. Um, I asked counsel to be here to give his legal opinion on that.
Yep. Um so ORS one zero point zero six one um states that unless otherwise provided by the terms of an employment agreement, which we would have, a juror must waive the jurisdiction. And so the idea was in a AAC meeting, um that maybe we need to amend this because it talks about turning over checks. Uh, finance indicates that's kind of a pain in the butt when that actually happens. We also don't know. I mean, we have no way to check to see if, if somebody's receiving a check and didn't turn it over. Um it'd be problematic because the statute requires that if you're being paid to be there by your employer, you must check the waiver. And so we, we were considering amending the policy to reflect the statute as it's currently written, so that it's an instruction to the, to staff that you're there on county time checking jury pay, you know, uh through payroll, you must waive per the statute. But that same statute does go on to state that the provisions of this subsection do not affect any claim of a juror may have for mileage reimbursement. And so since that's statutory, if they're going to claim mileage, that's going to be between them and the state court system. We, we don't suggest touching that at all within the, within the uh Human Resources policy, just so that we acknowledge we are, we do pay jury. Just so that we acknowledge we are, we do pay jury pay, jury duty pay, and that they're required to check waiver. That should reduce the amount of checks, I don't think many come in, but it should reduce the amount of checks, finance has to deal with. And then our policy more reflects current statute.
So does, when they check the waiver, does that mean they don't get paid over at the courts and they just collect their normal pay from us?
Yeah, they, exactly.
Okay, that, yeah, that's way better.
Yeah, it's ten dollars for the first two days, I think the third day you get a raise like twenty-five bucks.
Right, but it's also way better than if they do collect it and then, yeah, sort of then to Vicki, that seems missing.
Third day, yeah, the, the, the cost of depositing a check probably isn't worth a check.
Yeah.
But, and the mileage reimbursement is, is not that great. It's eight to twenty cents depending on the situation per mile. And so if they wanna go through that process and try to claim the mileage, you know, that's not any concern of that we have.
Does, yeah, does the board, does anyone from the board have concerns over this recommendation by council and HR? To clear, it's basically to just clarify that language related to.
Our policy.
I do not.
Okay, no concerns, so you have direction? Okay, uh, department, yeah, thanks Mark, department requests temporary hire, HR.
We are seeking your approval to bring back a temporary part-time hire to Human Resources to address current staffing shortages within the Human Resources Department. The Human Resources Department is currently experiencing significant staffing challenges due to the departure of the HR director. This shortage will most likely result in increased workload for existing staff and potential impact on services offered to our county departments. To mitigate the current staffing crisis, we propose rehiring former HR coordinator Jessica Hubble on a temporary part-time basis. Jessica previously worked in the Human Resources Department from October twenty twenty-one until July twenty twenty-four. She possesses necessary skills and experience to immediately contribute to the team and alleviate the current workload. Jessica will work nineteen hours per week for a minimum of twelve weeks.
Um, I, I'll, I'll make the motion and then I do wanna have some discussion. But I'll move that we approve the request to rehire Jessica Hubble as a temporary part-time basis assistant to the HR department at a UH twenty-two dash six.
Yes, I'll second.
So, motion made and seconded, are there questions, comments, thoughts?
Concerns?
I think he's.
I'll let you start. I'm here, I'll, I'll let you start.
Gotcha, thanks. My, my thing would be just that it says a minimum of twelve weeks. I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's, we could have her for twelve weeks. But my hope would be that since we're already starting the process for the new position, the new hire, that we could hopefully keep it at that. I, I don't want this to turn into, and I love Jessica, it's not, nothing 'cause of her, but just not like a, I could say a name, but I won't, I won't say this person's name, but a years and years and years of, 'cause we try not to do that, so.
And I think that was probably just an error on my end. That's kind of what I used, the twelve weeks at nineteen hours per week to come up with the fiscal impact on that. And really, I mean, if she's not needed for an entire nineteen hours, she doesn't need to work them, you know?
No, that all, yeah, sounds good, and I appreciate that she's willing to come back. And I think we probably do need that, plus we're getting the numbers.
Would, would you be okay with me rewarding it to Jessica, we'll work up to nineteen hours per week?
And I would just, for me, as one, I would say work up nineteen, you know, up to nineteen hours per week for, until we, you know, have the new director, I don't know, it doesn't even.
The staffing is stable?
Yeah, something like that.
If we, can I?
Yeah, yeah, please.
If we do not do this, what are some of the implications?
Um, things will fall through the cracks. Um, I just don't have the bandwidth to do both jobs. You know, I've already found a couple of things I've missed, likely not anything too major, but it's just, it's frustrating. And there's just a lot on the plate right now. And it'd be nice to have somebody who knows the system, knows operations in the department, to alleviate a little bit of that.
And I'll say for the record, I, I know that there was a memorandum previous to me being sworn in that froze hiring within general fund positions. I wasn't a party to that memorandum, and I, but I understand it's in place. And the reason I'm bringing that up is 'cause I think there's people that are gonna watch this, that are, that are gonna say, do we have a hiring freeze or do we not have a hiring freeze? And, and then it gets into what are our priorities? And we, that, that's a much bigger, broader argument. But I feel it's important for me to say that I understand those lines of thinking and those out there that, that might watch this and, and say, you know, you're prioritizing HR over, say, public safety or something like that. I, I am not doing that, I am not signaling that, and, you know, I will support this. Commissioner Degroot?
Thank you, I, I would think I would add to that, that, I mean, obviously we made exceptions to the hiring freeze, which include jail deputies, deputy district attorneys, and folks within the juvenile department in order to maintain that detention center for the juvenile as well. So there were those exceptions that were made and directly for public safety concerns. In addition to that, the employees that we do have working in those and all the other departments require support so that we can take care of our staff. And that support comes from the Human Resources Department in large part. So making sure that they're adequately staffed and able to provide that support is critically important. The most valuable asset we have as a county is, is the people and the, the staff that we employ, great, hardworking staff, and we need to be able to support them. So if we need to for temporarily, until we get our director, new director hired, have some additional support so that those items or, or that support that our staff requires doesn't fall by the wayside, then I think that that's the right thing to do.
Um, and I make an ask of the board. I think the board should also, I do think we should do this, and I will vote to support this. I think the board should also put it out there that departments that work a lot with HR that could provide assistance, that may have a little bandwidth, whether it's, you know, our admin staff who's now, we've reduced that. But, you know, whether it's our admin staff, whether it's staffing council's office, whether it's risk management, if there's other sort of departments that are very closely related to HR, I think it should, that the board should also direct them to give any extra bandwidth they have to help HR.
I support that.
Do you have an issue with that, Commissioner Degroot? I mean, I just think if it comes from the board, it's a lot stronger.
No, I, I don't have any issue with that whatsoever, just, I mean, obviously we want them to be able to fulfill their duties as well. So just the bandwidth that you have, just make sure it's realistic.
All right, so we do have a motion on the table to approve the request to rehire Jessica Hubble on a temporary part-time basis at a UH twenty-two dash six. There's no other discussion, I will call the question. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. That was very delayed.
I said it twice, you didn't hear me the first time.
Oh, you didn't, well, the first one it didn't come through. Okay, thanks HR, and you, you should actually stay for the next item, 'cause it has probably HR implications. The next item under B O C C is titled three plus remote work. I asked staff to put this on the agenda over, sort of at, toward the gears. And I saw a lot of news reports around what a lot of companies, utilities and others are doing, major cities related to bringing back remote workers. For example, the city of Portland, not that we generally try to emulate them, but their mayor or city manager or something just brought all their workers back full-time, no matter what. Everyone's like back to forty hour per week in the office. I know a lot of big companies, Northwest Natural and others have upped to what they're calling three plus. And that means everyone's in the office three plus days a week, no matter what. So I just, the board hadn't talked about remote work in a long time. I believe the place that the board landed, probably over a year ago now, was that nobody should be more than half-time remote work. And I think that also had to be approved by a supervisor. But I didn't know, I, I think the, maybe the next step is to go to three plus. But I just wanted to offer that for the board's consideration, 'cause we hadn't talked about it in a long time.
I, I can, I can hop in here. For me personally, I think it's time for everybody to come back to work. I'd like to see everybody back in the offices, I think that we are more productive, we collaborate better, and we provide a better service to the citizens when we are in the building. I believe there is also going to be exceptions to that. We have folks that we hire that don't live in Klamath County, that still make some effort to be here, or they work entirely remote. And those are going to be the exception, not the rule. There're gonna be times where we need more engineering support, we have to hire an engineer that lived, I think we had one that lived in Eugene for a while. We currently have one that lives in Medford. Those, I think those, again, are the exception, not the rule, and those can come to the board for that exception. Other than that, it's time for everybody to come back to work. Like, it's the right thing to do to give everybody some time to adjust and make it, you know, effective maybe March one, but it needs to happen.
I agree, I, I, I think, I, I know on principle, you're gonna see me here every day and the expectation is everybody else should be as well. The, with the, the understanding, like Commissioner Degroot said, there are specific narrow lanes, be it a technical skill, be it a specific problem set, I don't wanna give in a bunch of hypotheticals. But I understand, once in a while, there is that very narrow lane where somebody might need to, on a temporary basis, work remotely for a while. Again, not hypotheticals, but in, in generality, I mean, three plus, more like four plus one, I think that's my, my thinking.
Does anyone, A, wanna make a motion or have an idea of how they want to roll out any changes, if any?
What would?
Next steps.
Yeah, what, I mean, what would we be, are we changing the policy, is that?
There is a policy in place right now, the telecommuting policy, that allows for up to part-time work from home, with supervisor approval.
I would be willing to make a motion for a policy revision. I would make a motion that we revise policy that work at home is to be by exception only, with the exception provided by the Board of County Commissioners, and to be, to be effective March first.
Okay, so there's a motion made to revisit the telecommuting policy to go from up to part-time work at home with director supervisor approval to no work at home other than by exception only, and the exception is granted by supervisor or by the board? I was unclear on that, pardon your motion, Commissioner.
I said by the board.
By the board, okay. Sure, HR, please.
Please. Um, sometimes, and again, it's an exception, it is something that if temporary, like for an accommodation, maybe ADA accommodation or something like that, would that still warrant going to the board? I just worry about privacy issues.
I, I think an ADA accommodation, that's, falls under law.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable, and Commissioner Degroot, if you agree as well with like tasking that to HR, like HR can sign up on that?
Temporary accommodations not to exceed ninety days or something like that with HR? That would work for me.
Is, a, any other thoughts that you have regarding it as a whole?
I mean, everybody has their own opinions on it. I know there's a lot on both sides of the issues, so, you know, I think we're getting, moving back into where it's, um, the employee, it's more of a employer-based market right now, it's harder, getting harder for people to find jobs. So there isn't that flexibility that there might have been a couple of years ago. So employers are being able to make up these rules, come into effect, while these are.
I, I think I would like to add again that if, if you work for Klamath County, you're a public servant at some level. And the, the expectation from the public is they're paying you to be there doing your job. Just on a principle level, yeah, corporations, they, they, they have more freedom to, to do that. They don't have to worry about necessarily what the public sees. We, we belong to the citizens of Klamath County, and, and I think it's important to say that. And, and as a public servant, you should be visible to the citizens, that's the, the norm, minus some, some exceptions.
Yeah, and I, well, let's do the vote and then we can talk about how to communicate it. Okay, but I did bring back up the motion, so all in favor signify with an aye.
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 Okay, Chair votes aye, motion passes. I, I would have probably been in support of more of the three plus, but I also could go with the, I think you guys made good arguments, and so I can, I can go with that. We do, you mentioned Commissioner Degroot, a March first start. This is gonna be a big deal to, to some people, so I think we need to talk through how to communicate it out.
I think the more notice we give folks, the better, so getting a letter out from the board. I'd be fine chair with you signing a letter out to all employees that there's been a policy revision. Or if you think it better, to go out to department heads and then department heads to disseminate from there. Either one of those is fine, but I think a letter from the board ASAP would be appropriate.
I, I was kind of thinking communicating through department heads, but.
That's fine.
I don't have a strong feeling.
I, I don't know, and I, this will be my admission of inexperience in being the new guy. I, I mean, is this a, a large amount of employees, this is more of an impact?
Not that I personally know of, I mean, there could be some in departments that I'm unaware of, or.
And, and if there are those exceptions out there, I think, in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, we can revisit this. But two months seems, two plus months, or I guess a month and a half, month and a half seemed adequate to bring those exceptions forward.
And I, I mean, I just think the message really should be, you know, we want everyone to come back because then we're allowed to collaborate more, you know, teams can be more effective, that it's, it's positive. This isn't, this, in my mind, this is not meant to be punitive, this is meant to help our teams have more of a chance to collaborate. And, but I also am sensitive to the fact that people's work-life balance is really important. And there's, I know there's some people that really value having the work from home piece for a myriad of reasons. So I'm not insensitive to that.
Yeah, and I think we have, uh, signaled that we'll listen to those arguments.
Yeah, okay, so I will, I can work with HR on a letter that then goes out to department heads on behalf of the board though, not, not just the chair. If that's good with everyone, okay? Okay, Andrew and I will work on that, and then we just have two other items. Commissioner Degroot, I think you put the letter of support for Salsa Bourbon on there?
Yeah, thank you Chair, you can take a look at it. Yeah, thank you, Chair, um you can take a look at it and give it a brief read if you like, but I would make a motion that we sign a letter of support. For South Suburban Sanitary District.
Second.
Uh there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion, I don't see any, so I'll call the question, all in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
And if you would have staff stamp my name, I would appreciate it.
Sure, thanks. Um did you, did you say I, I think you're saying I before you hit the mic on or something cuz it's not coming through, no?
No, it's just if you're talking and I'm talking at the same time, you can't hear me.
Okay, um well, that motion passed, uh and I will have staff sign it and then our last item was the uh.
Yes.
Uh response letter to the request for uh process review from Mr. House. Uh staff did a good job of putting together a letter that reviews um that says, you know, we heard your. Request for review, we've reviewed it, these are what we found and uh there's spot for all the board members to sign off on, so. Um I would move that we sign the response to public records request and findings to Dan House.
Second.
With a a motion and a second, any discussion before we vote?
I. Yeah, I I will say this is something I was unaware of until recently and and but I did get time to kind of read some of the history. On this and and then I I took time today and read this letter that that I am going to put my signature on and. I think it addresses everything that Mr. House. Brought to our attention in the email chain.
Great, uh well, hearing nothing else, I will call the question, all in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes, uh that concludes our agenda, so I will adjourn us at, I think it's, I don't have any idea. What time it is, uh four, three?
It is three fifty.
That's because we don't have a clock.
Three fifty-four, we actually have a clock on the way, sir, uh it's almost to us, but uh Commissioner Degroot, good to see you. Well, um I I don't even know where you are, but we'll see you soon.
All right, see you later.
Okay, bye. Ashlyn, December sixth. Oh, you're right. Well, we'll have to. That's good, one.